Alright, the meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room on the east wall. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
President.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Wrightick?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
I'm gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a couple announcements. I want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded and it'll be broadcast at a later date. So that means that everybody needs to remember, if they want to speak, come forward once you're recognized and so that you can speak into the microphone. We'll need your name for the record and please spell it for the county clerk so she can get her minutes correct. Remember, no swearing or other inappropriate language. We all need to check our cell phones, try and have them shut off so we don't get interruptions if at all possible. I want to remind commissioners as well to try and have our microphones close so that the county clerk can hear and if you've ever-
Well, I can hear you guys fine but the recordings, we can't hear.
Yeah, and I probably for the first time ever went to YouTube and listened to one and many times we're not hearing what the commissioners are saying on those recordings. So I would encourage you to try and speak the best you can into the microphone. Just looking at the agenda and seeing what's on here, I'm not sure how long this meeting's gonna last. And so it might be shorter than normal. Normally, I like to say we might take a short recess about midway through the meeting, but if we're moving right along, we may just keep going and skip that item. We'll see how it goes. Again, this is probably the last time I'll mention it, but we have had Mr. Phil Kelly here. He's here as an attorney representing the county on civil affairs. They also have our county attorney on criminal affairs, Mr. Eubanks here tonight too, so anyway, just wanted you to be aware of that. Alright, so the next item is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
What'd that cost us?
Yeah.
Really? Thank you. A little bonus.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Alright, motion's carried. Want to remind everyone that the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. We do have an item at the end of the agenda tonight to go into executive session, but this would also include if there's any other reason that we might decide that we need to go into executive session and we just want you to be aware of that. The next item is the consent agenda. We have action, one action for all of these items unless someone wants to consider one separately. So I'd ask, is there any, anyone that wants to consider anything separate?
Boot for approval is-
Okay. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, so the motion's carried. We'll go on to the next item, Board of Equalization.
We'll be going to move it.
Yep, we'll need to move into the Board of Equalization first before we-
I take the motion to move the Board of Equalization.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second to move into Board of Equalization, we can go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, motion's approved. So we have received tax list correction. We have the written information in front of us, it looks like there's only one item under that. No one's here to discuss that, is there? Okay. Alright. So, any questions on this or discussion with commissioners? If not, we have a motion to approve the tax list correction.
I move that we approve the tax, tax list correction.
I'll second it.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, so the motion's approved, so we need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion to move Board of Equalization.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to go, to come out of the Board of Equalization. Let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, so the motion's carried. So we'll move on then to the next item, which is road and bridge, to discuss and consider resolution of completion of project C seventy-nine, four twenty, STWD dash CBMP six. Steve, what would you do? You can explain that.
Yeah. This is the County Road Five Bridge Replacement Project over by northeast of Lyman. This was part of the state county bridge match program. So I reached out to the state to see if we could, since that project was completed, we do have a little outlying matter on that project that hasn't been resolved yet. Explained that situation to the state, asked them if we could go ahead and submit for our bridge match. They came back and said they were fine with submitting for our reimbursement for our bridge match since the bridge was open and the structure itself was complete. That's what this is, is a request, there's a resolution in here. The board has to approve, asking for our two hundred thousand in the bridge match for that project. So I can entertain you and read the resolution if you want, or I believe you all have it in your packet, whatever your preference is.
I believe we have a written copy. Anyone feel it's necessary to read it?
There should be the written resolution and then there is also, should be a sheet of their spreadsheet of the reimbursement. So, and the two hundred thousand, they normally match fifty-five percent, but the two hundred thousand reimbursement is what was in the original contract that they would reimburse, so that's why it's two hundred thousand.
But our action will only need to be to approve the resolution.
Yep, will only need to be to approve the resolution.
That's part of it. Any discussion?
I'll go for approval of the resolution. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second on the, to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried, resolution's approved. I'm gonna sign it and give it right back to you.
All of them are considered.
All we all have to. Okay? Good. Let's start it down. Alright, we'll move on then to the general agenda items. First one is to discuss and consider modifying moratorium on renewable energy. It's the board or Phil, do you want to say anything on this?
Well, you started the discussion after you adopted the regulations for solar. Legally, now that you have a zoning regulation, conditional use permit for solar, I can see a reason to maintain a moratorium. So, I'm working on when Bill and I are meeting tomorrow, the first draft of the regulations. I go to planning commission in December for those and move on to others, issue directly to the renewable generation.
Would we, would we be better in the motion, whatever the motion is, to specify solar and then the rest of those would be a separate-
Yeah, I kind of, I had, still a draft of, a rough draft of one, so the motion may be that we terminate the moratorium on solar generation in light of your conditional use permit regulations and maintain the moratorium on all other renewable, all other renewables.
Are those regulations for solar, are they available to the public now?
I assume, sure, if they wanted, that clerk to get them built, provided anybody, I don't know if they're published yet.
Probably not on the website.
Or online yet.
Okay.
But they're certainly available for anybody to ask for them if you make a copy.
So my concern is an unfair competitive advantage for solar over wind or green methanol or any other renewable energy. If we have regulations published or available for the public to get their hands on, it gives, it gives solar energy a jumpstart, an unfair competitive advantage. And if we were, we could even compound that even more if we lift the moratorium on solar and leave a moratorium on wind or any other renewable energy. That's my concern.
I don't know if a, from a legal standpoint, since we have a solar regulation now, for the purpose of the moratorium was to give you time to create the regulation, I expect to have, expect to have the wind regulation available for you in January.
And the moratorium, as it says today, would expire December eighteenth, December seventeenth?
I think the dates are in there. Do you have a copy for me? No.
Okay. We did a motion January sixteenth of twenty fourteen, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four.
And then we renewed it.
And then we renewed it and that motion was for when the first one would expire, but we made it in June.
Is the date in there?
Yep. Extended on June seventeenth for six more months.
From when it expired though. And you set it in January for six months.
So technically, it's gonna expire on its own in December.
Yes.
For all of them.
For all of it.
Right. Unless we took some other action.
Prior to that.
Prior to that date.
First being in December, yes.
Right.
And planning commission will receive wind regulations, first draft of wind regulations, what, what week of December?
One, the way we did on the solar was, Bill and I worked, worked the draft up and then there's a committee of the planning commission we met with and made some further changes and edits and then had a planning commission meeting that was noticed as a public hearing. So I, I'm guessing that looking at the timeline right now, that that public hearing for the planning commission would be in December. You have, be in line, have a public hearing with the commissioners in January.
And, and that's going to be for wind, just wind?
Just wind or nuclear, doing anything on nuclear or whatever. I haven't seen anything by nuclear or, or any other regulation or any other method to generate electricity, but I haven't looked.
So there, there was an item in the solar regulations that said, you know, the commissioners had to approve, give approval prior to any building permits being of. Is there any way we could quickly add that language to wind to, to cover ourselves so, because when this moratorium ends, applications could come in and it sounds like those wind applications could come in before we adopt new wind regulations. There's a couple, there'll be a, a small window, but it could be two or three weeks.
It would make some sense to extend the moratorium on wind.
Right, we can do that.
In January, because you know that you're going to be looking at having a public hearing in January.
Right. And as far as we know, no one's out there in the wings waiting to apply for that anyway, but all we would need to do is have you write something up and we can extend the deadline an extra thirty days to get it done. Right? It'd be a simple thing and it protects us and for the intent that we're not quite ready I would think that would be prudent and easy to do.
I'll just, I'll just say that I'm, I'm against any unfair competitive advantage for one form of renewable over another. And I'm, what I'm afraid is that there would be a wind company out there that would sue us for providing a competitive advantage to solar, wind, solar generation. That's my, that's my concern and I guess-
Not if we're specific in saying that this, this moratorium that we're, that we're lifting is, is on solar because we do have the regulations. The other one isn't, isn't done yet and it still needs to be approved by this board. So even if somebody does apply next month for a wind, it still has to come before this board. In the meantime, those regulations can be written up.
Well, this conditional use has got to come before this board, which is gonna put it into January and by then we're gonna have, we should have some things put together.
Well, we, we don't, as of right now, we don't have an application for solar.
Well, that's because we have a moratorium. As soon as we release your moratorium, then they can put in an application for your moratorium.
Well, and I would only be, I think I understand what Charlie's saying, but the unfair competitive advantage I'm not seeing. I mean, there's lots of land out there, there's lots of opportunities out there and I don't, I don't see an unfair competitive advantage by us taking off the moratorium. We're, we're still only really talking three weeks early, four weeks early here maybe. And I don't see that being an unfair advantage to someone.
That was the reason we applied that was, we had the regulation. I don't know that we can stand here holding off for any other reason. We, we gave a specific reason what we asked for.
And it's done now.
I think we have to remove it now. It's done, we've completed that. Things are gonna start moving forward with or without us. I have no problem with moving it forward.
So I'll, I'll just explain why I believe it's an unfair competitive advantage, is that there's only, when I read the WAPA feasibility report, there's only so much space on the grid. And there are, you know, the project, the Citula project out here was like fourth or fifth in the queue. There were three or four other renewable energy projects that had to be studied prior to the Citula project being studied and whether or not it could in fact connect to the grid. And so, there's a, there's a queue and the sooner you're in the queue, the sooner you can get approved. And, and so if, if, if a company can get permitted sooner or have these studies done sooner, you know, they get put in the queue and, and they get, they get the right to connect to the network before anybody else. And so if, if there's an application process that somebody can start sooner, if solar can start the application sooner than wind, that's an unfair competitive advantage.
Well, I think our line capacity is all addressed in that application. I think we have it all in there. And they've got to bring that to us and prove to us that there's room on that grid for those, that conditional megawatts.
Right.
Isn't that right? Am I wrong in that?
Prove the WAPA, I think.
In our application that address, we're-
Why would they have to provide us? We address that they have to provide us a copy of the agreement they have, but we don't control.
No, no, we don't control it, but I mean, they aren't gonna get on the grid unless there's capacity for it.
Because of fact, yes.
So, I mean, I don't see, you know, I mean, our, our deal's set up to where they've got to show us that there's capacity.
Of, of course they do, but there's scarcity on the grid.
There is, but we can't regulate that.
Yeah, WAPA's gonna make that decision to me.
Yeah, we're not gonna regulate where there's room or where there isn't room. If, if there isn't room, they're not gonna build it, I'm assuming.
That's right.
That's, again, we're not, we're not staying in our lane here, we need to focus on, on what has to happen on that land. And we, we considered putting solar and wind together in the same line and then backed away from that and marched forward and everybody all marched forward, which is solar. So.
Who made that, who made that decision?
I don't know, I think it was, it could have been Bill and I sitting at the table saying, which is wind, wind later, because we, so I think it's probably Bill and I made that decision as we were, the draft, in that we were concerned that the focus seemed to be on solar, so we were concerned about addressing solar, knowing we were doing it next. And they will have it ready for you by then.
Then I'm assuming the regulations for wind are going to be considerably different than, than for the solar as far as-
Whatever. The, the only, the interesting thing is they're gonna be quite a bit the same as far as the application process and the design process. The only thing we're gonna add are issues involving noise and something to do with casting as a shadow, if the sun's on the other side of the wind turbine and you've got a house and the sun hits it in the right direction, you're gonna have a flicker effect. So, the only, only changes are those issues, what's gonna happen with noise and how far away do you have to be from a residence because of noise? That's it. Otherwise, the deconditioning's the same, the application process is the same, what you have to produce in the application's gonna change a little bit because it's wind and not solar. But it, because all the regulations, all the federal regulations, even the parks, FAA, military, almost are again.
Well, which is, which is where we started. Again, the two things we need to concern ourselves with, does it meet the zoning regulation and is it a deterrent to the, to the neighbors? Is it, is it going to bother the neighbors in any way? Whether it be a hog farm or, or a, or a wind generator? That's-
What you're gonna see is gonna, the name has changed, where you saw solar is gonna say wind and then we're, we're doing three classifications so that you can have a zone generator in your backyard if you want to, just to service your house. And then we have the commercial to service several businesses or a neighborhood and then the utility.
Or, or however much the land can handle, whatever we do.
Setback requirements, we gotta be careful about, about the FAA with the airport, of course, the-.
And those, those regulations are already in place.
They're already, they're already federal's-
FAA, FAA watches that pretty close, anything you do out there.
So I would expect subject to getting publication, have the right timeline for publication notices, that if the planning commission meets in the middle of December, I don't know when they will be.
I can't, I was looking at their agendas, I can't tell.
You, you could potentially have the first meeting in January, the second meeting in January, and then public hearing. So I don't know, I, I, I hear what you're saying about a competitive advantage and I don't know how it would work if they both went into effect where the moratorium was lifted at the same time. Does that mean it'd hit Bill's desk at ten oh two and then it's on ten oh three? I don't know. Alex, that's hard for us.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a difference to us. You know, if, if one came in on January first and one came in on February first, that timeline doesn't, wouldn't have a, a bearing on how we approve or deny a permit. But what it does is it, it would have a bearing on what the network or the, the grid would be able to respond to.
Does our, does the application to the county have a bearing on wind, like given the law?
Yes.
You're gonna have to file it.
Because, yeah, because a lot, in a lot of those cases, those, like, you know, the Citula project told us that they would not pursue an interconnect agreement until they had a permit from the county. Because that's, it's one of those things, you don't put the cart before the horse. And so, that's, they're not gonna spend that money until they know they have a permit.
And I think you should anticipate that, that when an application comes to you, it's gonna come to you several times for action. Several times before you get filed. So depending on how the interaction goes with people filing, filing things or providing additional information to you, I don't know whether one's gonna get ahead of the other.
But if they all have the same starting line, then the rest is up to them. But we have to, we should make sure they all have the same starting line, the same starting date. And without the same starting date, there is an unfair competitive advantage.
That can be a consideration, whether you want to have, have, those industrials have the opportunity to decide. And it's only, it's gonna be eight weeks from now.
Well, from my standpoint, I, I think I understand what Charlie's saying. I don't agree with it, but I understand what he's saying. You know, based upon interest in doing something, we've had a application from solar. We've not had any applications from wind. We've not heard any talk of wind that I know of. And at this point in time, I certainly don't think that we're putting other applications at an unfair advantage, in my opinion. We're talking simply a couple of weeks before we would be taking action otherwise unless, I am concerned that we're gonna need to, at our next meeting, move that moratorium back for another month or something just to make sure that you, that you guys are ready.
The way that agenda item's written, I think we can move it tonight. It just says right under, we're, we're doing renewable. I think we can move that according to the way that is.
And we're specifying that this is for solar.
Yeah, we're gonna specify.
And, and the next, if, if it's necessary to move thirty or forty-five days or whatever the case might be for a wind, that app, that applicant's gonna have to understand that they can't do anything until we have the regulation.
It's no different than the, than the solar has understood. They went along with us and worked with us.
I think we're, we're just-
Are, are you okay with moving the moratorium back in the same motion or would you prefer to do it next meeting?
Well, I don't, that's, that's your decision. Well, I don't think that's, it's your decision.
The agenda item allows that to happen.
I think it allows the way it's written.
The agenda item allows that.
Moratorium any way you want with this agenda.
Alright, so let me see if I can get this motion the way we need to get it. So my motion would be to, um, lift the moratorium. On the solar portion only of the renewable energy applications.
I'll second it.
Just a minute, just a minute.
But yeah, I need to end that we would, um, uh, continue the moratorium. On the wind portion.
On other renewable, other.
On all others for how, thirty, an extra thirty or sixty days?
Make it six months, just add it to six months too, because we can pull it off anytime.
Are we not covered until January sixteenth of twenty twenty-five? They, they made the motion in January to set the initial moratorium, did they not?
And they extended it to?
Six months from when it would expire, not from June. They said the motion was for six months when the upcoming one would expire.
And I, so I, I haven't read all that, I haven't looked at that, I'm not sure where we're at.
We're good for you.
Can we do this? Maybe we simply do the motion as it is now. And if you want a further ex- uh, extension for the wind. You let us know what you need at the next meeting and we can.
It sounds like at, at the earliest, December eighteenth or so, it would expire. So we have a push meeting in December where we can.
Can't we just add on the six months and then like, just like we're gonna do tonight? When we've completed all of our work, whichever time, however long it takes, we can end that moratorium the same way.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. If it's, Phil was shaking his head as you said it.
Is it, I think it's fine to do that.
I just don't want to discourage somebody from not even making an application because we've got the moratorium out here for another six months. Well, that's, that's not.
Within.
So you're lifting, lifting wind potentially tonight? And in December, if you adopt the wind regulation, you lift.
We can lift the remainder of the moratorium, right, right now, right.
Yeah, okay, and so that, my motion, I said the part about solar and then I would conclude. That we continue the moratorium on all others for six months. And we'll, yeah, that'll be the motion.
I will throw my second one in.
Okay. Is there a second?
All seconded.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So, I agree with Ken that extending it for six months. I mean, just putting that in the news could discourage applicants. So I do believe we should, in the motion, it should say thirty days extending. The moratorium on all, on all other renewables for, call it forty-five days. That gives them a timeline to complete the regulations. And it also, um, you know, signals to anyone who may apply that they don't have to wait six months. It could be.
I'd take it, use January thirtieth because forty-five days may not cover.
Okay.
And according to you, Phil, you're, you're, what you're telling us is that there's going to be a few additions to the wind side. Of the regulations, but everything else is pretty much the same.
Yeah, it, it.
Okay, so it's, it's not gonna be complicated, we're not gonna have to go through line by line on every other thing again?
There will be many lines where I'll say this is the same as solar.
The same as the one that we already did. Okay. That'll be great.
So we have a motion though, on the floor, and it's been seconded. To remove the moratorium on the solar and to extend for six months. The moratorium on everything else. That's the motion, and we have a second. So to me, we need to vote on it, and if it goes down, we'll consider another motion.
Get ready to vote.
Everybody ready to vote on this one? Alright, let's vote.
You have three yeses and two noes, uh, Knapper and Meyer the Nays.
Okay, so the motion's approved. And then I would only add that the intent would be that it's a whole lot shorter than that. And that hopefully sometime in January or maybe February, we could lift the moratorium on wind. Okay, so I would only say that.
Can I, can I read your June motion, please?
Yeah, no.
Approve extending moratorium on conditional use permits related to renewable energy topics. For an additional six months following the end of previous moratorium, which you put in place for six months in January. Which would take us to July at six months, we'd be back in January.
We said an additional six months and I guess.
I think we need to specify solar.
Decide when that ends.
So what, what you just read, Kelly, you, you had a six-month moratorium to start with.
Starting in January.
Can we pass it?
So it goes to.
July.
July. You extended it for six months.
Takes us to January.
Takes us to January.
Can we just extend it at six more months?
Six more months.
Six more months.
We're covered.
We're covered.
Alright.
But we've covered from six months from today.
Alright.
Was it specified that it was for solar and not for wind?
Yes.
But solar.
Everything but, alright, so as long as, as long as we have better. Solar's been removed from already standing.
First part of that motion was to, um, allow solar to. We're lifting that moratorium on solar.
What was the vote, Kelly?
Three.
Tonight?
Yes.
Three to two.
Three to two? You and Charlie are notes?
So I would just like, I would just like the minister reflect and I would hope the media reports that our intentions are to lift. The, the additional six months moratorium on wind, hopefully much sooner than the six-month deadline.
But we did lift the moratorium on solar.
Yes.
We're, we're done with that.
Yes.
So whoever wants to apply for solar, have at it.
We'd be ready to lift the moratorium. We could have it as an agenda item the same day as we have the public hearing to. And which one, whether you make some changes, we might be the second meeting in January, like we did with the solar.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so that does put the solar, um, applications back on the table. And if someone wants to submit something, they can. Okay, so I'm assuming that that helps satisfy some of the things from the Preston family. Alright, um, we're gonna move on to the next item to receive Keno update from Mr. Keller, Ryan Keller. The Keno operator, come on up.
Ryan Keller, R Y A N K E L L E R. I'm on Aspen Street in Gearing, and I brought my general manager Derek with me. I'll let him introduce himself.
Derek Wellman, D E R E K W E L L M A N, Sixth Street in Gearing.
And I brought Derek with me today because he's been kind of in charge of a lot of the upgrades that we've done to the building on Avenue I. So I thought if you guys had some questions, you might be able to answer them a little more furly than I can.
Um, so did you say that you wondered if we had any questions? Is that what you said?
If you had questions, I, this kind of our quarterly update, tell you what we're kind of working on. Um, I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare. I did bring, do you want to talk about what we're working on first or?
Want to just go over the, what changes you made?
Okay, yeah, I'll let you go ahead on, we've done a lot of the remodeling.
Yeah, um, we've had some kind of unfortunate things happen over there. Um, fire inspector came in, we had to kind of close down for five days. Uh, remodeled the kitchen, kind of did some other upgrades in there, we painted, uh, just kind of cleaned up and stuff like that. Um, you know, we closed down, have the kitchen redone, but our hood system has also gone out on the surface last, last month or so. So we've had some, some issues going on inside as far as the workings go. But, um, internally, you know, I've done some painting, I've changed a lot of the decorations inside, the lighting fixtures inside. Um, you know, outside, I kind of have some lights up, um, it just looked kind of dreary on the outside, um, to a passerby not from here. You kind of wouldn't know what it was, so I've had some new signage put on the outside of the building as well. And I've got some other signs that are gonna be getting put up here soon enough to just kind of draw some attention to, to the location itself. Because, uh, they're just, the signs that were there were old, um, it was just time for a lot of new things to be put in those spaces.
What about the big signboard, digital board out front?
So we redid the upper part, the Lucky Keno part of it. Um, I did have some quotes done. Oh, it's been about a year ago now from lighting signs as far as having that bottom part done. Um, their suggestion was it's old enough at this point, basically just replace it. Um, and I think it was twenty-eight thousand, something like that, thirty-two thousand.
A panel, those two panels.
Yeah, so we, we, Ryan replaced the lights on the up, the upper part with the Lucky Keno sign there. Um, but you know, outside that, the bottom side was still just not working unfortunately, so.
While we're on the topic of maintenance, I do want to mention that, uh, Scotts Brook County has been extremely helpful in helping maintain that building. Helping Jay with the maintenance crew has been exceptional on any needs that we have. He is on top of it. He helped us get going in the pinch. I think he even spent some time with it on the weekend on his own time, so he's just been phenomenal as far as. Maintenance goes, he really has. Um, some of the, some of the things we're working on right now are, uh, I brought this. So we're gonna update our Keno signage, so instead of looking at a grid of just numbers, we'll have something like that to look at. It'll kind of show what we call the fishbowl, where the ball's bouncing around in it. And you can just kind of catch your eye something kind of, uh, static, just.
Is that just in this location?
No, it's actually, that's gonna be an all-night series.
Really?
Um, and we are also working on. We're also working on the electronic Keno. So what that's gonna do is allow a player to play at a licensed location from their phone. And it uses geo fencing to make sure that you are at an established location, so that that location will still get their six percent. But it will, you'll be able to sit at your table and play.
What if you've got somebody that, what, what is the age, eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, what if you have an eighteen-year-old sitting there having lunch?
So the app has to have, there's age verification that goes along with it.
So you have those, you have those blocks in there to take care of that?
If you turn to the next page in that, there is a Keno kiosk there. Now, we do have that up and running. We don't have any in the service yet. We, we're trying to get those to work with what's called a pay center. So a player will be able to go up, write their own Keno ticket. And if they win, they'll be able to go to, it's essentially like an ATM. They put their ticket in, it validates their age, and it pays them. So what that'll do is that'll take the burden off of the locations to hire an employee. And that'll allow me to put Keno in a lot of locations that we've never been able to venture into before. It's kind, it's a really big deal. We had it up and running. We ran it for three days.
It was like seven, it was about a week.
Okay, we, we had it up and running. The state came down, the inspector said it was okay. After seven days, we got a call from the state tax commission, they wanted it turned off. So we had to meet some more requirements. That's what we're working on right now to get able to get that back in play. But it looks like middle of January, I think we're gonna be able to do that.
What was the reason they wanted to turn it off?
It was the commingling of Keno funds, that, that same pay center, you could take a skill game ticket and you could cash out from. So they don't want the commingling of the two funds, even though the pay center does separate it, they still do not like that idea. Um, and it also, the pay center didn't have age verification on it at the time. And it didn't have, so if you won more than fifteen hundred dollars, you gotta do tax paperwork. So what the system will now allow us to do is that prompts the player, it takes a picture of their ID. They have to fill in the tax paperwork. It goes out to an outside, uh, monitoring service. When they're, when they're satisfied with it, they okay the pay center to go ahead and pay the player.
So how do they, um, um, verify that they're of age?
There, so, there's, there's two different forms. The app itself, depending on whether, how you do it, if you were to wa, you're talking about the kiosk, walking up to one.
Let's talk about both.
Okay, the app, to, to download the app, you will have, there'll be a age verification in there. I imagine, uh, you send in your ID, a picture of your ID, and then they'll activate your account when they, they can prove that that is you. On the kiosk, it'll actually take a picture of your ID, and that's where the outside monitoring service comes in. So they go in and they look at, they make sure, there's a camera on it, so they're looking at you, they're looking at the ID, and they're making sure that you are of age.
Based upon that identification that you provided for them?
Exactly, and then the camera image that they are looking at live.
Right, trying to verify.
Can you stay approved then, or do you have, do you have to go through that all over again?
No, once, once it gets approved, it'll stay approved. The kiosk is already approved, the, what we're struggling on right now is the pay center. But once that gets approved, we're thinking, we're hoping middle of January, and then we will be able to implement them. I could put kiosks now, but I think it'll just confuse players after we add that, so I kind of want to deploy the whole thing in one shot.
So, playing devil's advocate here, you know, one, one of the reasons you want to do that is that you don't have to hire somebody to do it. What is going to be the availability of somebody if that kiosk goes down? You know, I, I.
Look, oh yeah, oh, believe me, that's.
Places where people go there specifically to play Keno, yeah.
So, like, the, the pay centers that I'm running right now, if there is an error, I usually get an alert right away. Sometimes that system does not work, uh, location calls though. And we're usually no more than thirty minutes away from anywhere to be able to get there and take care of the problem. Just like Keno for printer dies or a TV goes out.
I don't have to worry about, my numbers never come up anyway, so sorry, Keno. But I'm sure that there are some that it was, that was concerning.
Think they're going to. Some think their, their numbers are gonna come up.
I think the lights are broken.
Yeah, seven days we had it in there, um, we didn't have any problems at all.
No, it was, a lot of questions, but I think once.
Some of my younger players have come in, they loved it. Like, they would much rather have done with a machine like that. Do their thing, get their ticket.
And you've got some places where, where the writer, they get busy and they, they're, they're waiting on tables or they're doing something else. And you could stand for fifteen minutes and they're not getting away. Exactly, yeah, not mine, but that's alright.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a, sounds like a really good idea, modernizing.
So far, so good. We've partnered with, uh, Gaming Arts out of Las Vegas. A company called Guiwiti, they make the pay center, they're out of Germany. A company called Easy Links out of Florida, they do the software to make everything talk together, and then us. So it's kind of a partnership.
So in, in a place where they do have a, a, a Keno person, are you paying the salary or is the establishment paying the salary?
Location pays.
The location pays the salary.
And we will even, like a lot of, there's, there's a lot of locations where they don't have issues with Keno writers and stuff. But we're gonna add these, we're gonna put these in every location we have, and then try to add more to it. Uh, just because there are players that would prefer, they don't, they don't like people to know what they're spending or what they're winning.
So it seems to me that the majority of the locations is the main Keno parlor and then. Bar, so to speak. So with these kiosks, tell me where you're thinking about putting them? Where are gonna be some problems that we're gonna have some complaints about?
They'd, they'd have to ask for it. I mean, we wouldn't put them in, I, I don't see any place that would have a problem with it going in. They would want it there. And it, it does also, it, it takes away a lot of the stress of having to deal with the cash. So the deposits are all locked behind lock and key, as is the winning money. I think that'll help with people wanting Keno in their restaurant. A lot of them don't want to deal with the hassle. They don't like the idea of, they're responsible for this money, they're responsible for these checks, they're responsible for those deposits. I think it'll help alleviate the stress on locations.
So as establishment, they have no responsibility with the kiosk at all? It's all on you?
Their, their responsibility is to provide a safe and secure place for the people that are willing to play. But yeah, other than that, they won't have to deal with anything. Keep the license up to date current.
So you don't particularly foresee kiosk, uh, in the middle of the mall or in a clothing store somewhere? Or something like that?
To, to have Keno, you have to have a Class C liquor license.
Okay.
So if you don't have a Class C liquor license, it's not even on the table.
So the Class C liquor license is the key?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be in a, at least a, somewhat of a bar-type setting?
Most of the time. Now, one thing it will let us do is be able to put it into convenience stores, where you see those skill games. So it'll let one go in there, and that would be revenue that we've never been able to capture before.
Say that again?
It would, the kiosk looks a lot like a skill game, like what you see around, so it would let us be able to put those into gas stations. It would, the kiosk looks a lot like a skill game, like what you see around, so it would let us be able to put those into gas stations, where you see a lot of those skill games.
So the, so, so even though they're not consuming the alcohol on, on premise, they have a class C life license?
Liquor license, yes.
And even the skill games are located off, kinda off, a- away from where all the activity is in the, in the mini world.
Yeah, most, most locations, they try to kinda, put them in a corner somewhere or something.
There may be some, but I don't. So you could play your numbers while you play the skill game and double dip?
Exactly.
Double pickpocketed, whichever way to look at it.
But in those locations, you wouldn't be consuming alcohol.
Right, right. Might buy it on your way out the door with your winning money or, but other than that, you know.
Well, I, and so I think most people know and, you know, I'll say it again just to be real clear, and that's that. Uh, as you know, keynote isn't my cup of tea, I'm not extremely excited about it. Um, I realize that if, um, I mean, I certainly love the money that it provides, but. Um, it's not something that I'm terribly excited about. And I'm just concerned with the, making sure that we don't have people underage that ends up being able to participate. Because if so, then I'm gonna be real excited about taking them out or doing something different, okay?
That's what I.
So let's be sure we understand that.
That would jeopardize my license, so.
And the state watches that pretty close, who has to file paperwork on each of his employees?
So I would only say that, um, uh, and, but I know that, um, uh, if they don't. Um, do it here, they're gonna, there's gonna continue to be more and more options, I think, available. And so I think we, I think I can see that handwriting on the wall, so. Um, maybe Lisa can maybe brief us on the numbers just a little bit?
Yeah, I was, first off, I wanted to mention they closed down for four or five days at the end of June, or at the end of July, when was that guy, so it wasn't recent.
End of June, that was.
End of June.
Yep, we're going, beginning of July.
Yeah, and they had to do, like he, um, Derek said, significant work to the kitchen ceiling.
Our insulation that was, when they built that was not fire retardant, so we had to pull all that out and redo it. It should never have passed the inspection the first time, the new fire caught it.
The new fire inspector, so you didn't have a fire there, no? Okay, I just was gonna point out, I got the first four months of keynote activity up on the screen, and I'm just looking at the top section net right. And like this last month, Russ, something's happening at the Rustic, they're dipping, dipping, dipping down.
They're dripping or, or drooping?
Yeah, they're drooping, and Ryan tells me we have keynote in Torrington now, so our Torrington market isn't coming to more.
That'll change it. There's a lot of people from Wyoming came here.
And if you, if you look at Red's numbers there, he's picked up a lot, I think a lot of people bounce between the two.
Mitchell and Moral, yeah, but, and, and obviously, yeah, I'm back, Rax and Frontside are doing pretty good. Backr- Frontside was a little low last month, wasn't it, in comparison to the other months, but? Oh, there you go. Can't eat, we're not gonna play keynote. Yeah.
You know, in the Rustic, we don't have a writer sitting there all the time, so I think a lot of people that come there don't realize that you can play keynote.
Right, and, uh, Steve, he wants, he, he knows about this system, he's got a pay center for skill games now. He's excited to be able to tie keynote into it for that same reason, so. You don't have a line of people waiting to pay out while you're trying to write tickets for the game, well, you, you, you know.
That makes a difference too, doesn't it?
So that'd be kinda nice too, if you're, if you do have both, you have a keynote writer and the kiosk. The winners are just gonna, they're not gonna wanna deal with, they're just gonna go to the kiosk and get paid, and that frees up that keynote writer a little bit too.
It will, but like I said, majority of the time, there's nobody at that seat, so then, you know, a lot of people I know don't realize that they can play, that they must think that, well, they're gonna start soon, you know.
As, as that pamphlet gets around there on that second page, you'll see that the, oh, you'll see that, that's what the TVs will look like.
Yeah, I see now.
So I think that'll catch your eye a little bit more too than just a board of.
I see that, it looks like a really good system for what, for what you're trying to accomplish, you know, that's why.
Absolutely. How long do they claim the unclaimed wins?
Thirty, thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah. And then if they aren't claimed, it goes into a reserve account to be used towards future gaming capital needs, right? Is that, am I saying it right? So which that account right now is sitting at fifty to sixty thousand, Ryan, somewhere it's.
Yeah, it's up there.
Yeah. So cash your keynote chick, tickets if you play.
Is it, there's sixty thousand of unclaimed?
That, that's.
It's, it's not in the paperwork.
Yeah, that's from the time keynote started.
Oh, hard.
It's chum, it's chumulated over that time, yes.
Yeah, and he can use it for such things as a new system, right? You could use it.
We could, yeah.
And you can use it maybe for some up, you were mentioning keynote related updates to the facility.
Could this be used for these kiosks that you're talking about?
It could, I, I probably want it, you know, I, I've never asked for anything out of that fund, and hopefully I never have to.
But it's just.
But that'd be a good fund for you, for your remodeling or upgrades.
It would be, yeah.
Or how about that sign you mentioned?
That would be a great, that would be a great.
Maybe that's where you could put it.
Yep. Or, or maybe split it, you know, maybe split it, I definitely wouldn't wanna wipe that fund out, cause that's when we would need it for something. But, but maybe split it or something on the sign, yeah, that would be great.
Might be a good way to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wasn't that, wasn't, so that fund has never been dipped into?
That's what he's, he has.
Not, not since I've been here, no.
Cause I thought, for some reason, I thought that number was in the two hundreds before we changed operators.
I can probably look it up quick, I can remember where my stuff is at.
And that's the one fund I don't really ever see either, I just see what the monthly deposit goes, the unclaimed wins that go in, so.
So at the end of, well, I gotta see what month I'm looking at here, I think it's like September seventy-eight thousand, sitting in that reserve account. It's not held by the county.
Does it hold that?
Yeah. Small, Ryan is part of small business.
I think it's the operator's discretion on how it's spent, and if it was seventy-nine thousand.
Yeah, currently.
Oh, it's currently seventy-nine thousand?
September thirty.
I thought we just said it was sixty thousand.
Well, I threw out a number, I couldn't remember the exact, so I looked it up.
Oh, okay, so what was it in twenty nineteen?
If I have, if I'm that far back in my spreadsheet, Charlie, I'll try. Well, that I might, will you s-
I think you had it in another book.
I could, there you go, maybe that's what I need to do. At the end of twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at, where am I at, July? Reserve fund's sitting at six thousand, right there. Yeah, seven thousand, seven thousand three hundred at the end of July of twenty nineteen.
Wouldn't we change operators, Ryan?
God, it took two years to do, yeah, April of twenty twenty, I believe is when I became, was it twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, April of twenty-one. It was a two-year process, it was.
Can we look at January of twenty-one?
Can't we look at January, you're moving too fast on me.
You're talking about unclaimed wins?
Yeah.
You're talking about January, January of twenty twenty-one. How about January twenty twenty-two, you wanna go back a year?
How about December twenty?
Twenty-three thousand, well, technically twenty-three, twenty-five thousand. And it earns a little bit of interest every quarter.
So our agreement with your firm, does it, what does it say about those funds? That they're his?
That, that they're only to be used for gaming purposes, yes, yeah.
And I'm pretty sure that's a state statute thing, it's not a agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
And so what would be a gaming purpose?
Or upgrade, upgrade to the keynote business of some sort, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Upgrade. I understand that. Okay.
Ryan, when is your contract renewed with the county? Didn't we just do the, the yearful?
Yeah, uh, the end of twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
So, um, as I look at this sheet that has four years of information. The county's portion, it looks like the overall, the gross numbers are going up, especially into twenty-four.
If you look at the four-year snapshot, yeah.
Uh-huh, and so that column, which one is it, the one that says county share is what we get?
Yes.
So in twenty-one, it was four hundred and fifty thousand, in twenty-two, it was five hundred and ten thousand. Twenty-three, it was five hundred and ten, and twenty-four, it was five hundred and thirty.
Right.
So it's basically slowly going up.
We hope it maintains.
I think once we implement this system, this new stuff, I think it's gonna make a huge impact.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts for Ryan?
Sure appreciate the updates, really looks good.
No, I'm.
Well, I was gonna s- there's the report from the state. Um, charitable gaming activity is down two point six percent across the state. Um, total written, I guess you could say, tax receipts are down two point six percent across the state. Um, and then if we look at, uh, quarter to quarter. Like April through. June. And then twenty-three is considerably less than April through June of twenty-four. And that includes the months where, the months where down.
Yeah, well, the week, yeah.
The week, the week, yeah, yeah, and then.
Are you looking at our reports or the state reports?
No, the state's.
Okay. Yeah, cause you and I looked at that, and I didn't think things were much different for us, our first three months or.
I know that we've had, the last couple of months have been pretty rough, I think, economy and election is kinda what I'm figuring it was, I do. I kinda watch my aunt's restaurant, it's been, the Law Cabin in Gearing's been there for forty years, so I kinda watch what those numbers are doing, kinda tells me. The, what the local economy's doing, and it's been tight over there too.
Oh, yeah, money's tight.
And finding cooks.
Oh, don't get me started. Yep, cooks are tough.
So when we said prior twenty twenty-three, okay. County share, I see. I had my lines mixed up, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Ryan? Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And, uh, this, we don't need any action on this, it's just a report, right?
We were supposed to have them in every, we tried for quarterly, but it's been a while.
Okay. Keep us posted. Thanks.
Thank you. Here's your, you, what's that?
All right, next item on the agenda is to discuss and consider health insurance rates, deductibles, health savings, contributions, and changes for twenty-five. Lisa?
Okay, I'm pulling up my spreadsheet, hold on, I gave you all a copy of, um, some of our information that we're pulling together. As, as you all know, when we are talking about budget and coming to you to re- renew our, um. The stop-loss carrier back in June, our claims experience last year was higher than it had been for some time. And in order to, I guess, calculate what I give to you for your budgets for that number per FTE. I take some claim, information that we get from our CI about that time of year, May and June. They call it the expected claim cost for the next year, based on your experience from the prior year, right? Well, here's my numbers for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, for five years. Two point seven million, almost two point, two point five million, two point seven, two point six, but this last year, three point three. And we divide that by our approximate FTE count here, I've been using two hundred forty-one, comes up with my annual cost. Take that, divide that number by twelve, comes up with that number we use in our budget per FTE. To try to budget our health insurance for everybody's budgets. So for the last few years, we, let's see, in twenty twenty, we used nine hundred sixty-seven per FTE to calculate the health insurance on the different budgets. Nine thirty-five was the next year, I've been using nine fifty for the last three years. But this year's with that higher claim cost, the number calculates to one million, one forty-one. And it really wasn't a great option to come to you and say, we need to increase our health insurance too, we squeaked by as it was. So we haven't changed our health insurance rates here since, I'm gonna say twenty nineteen. We've kept it the same for many years, we're, in comparison, we did a lot of looking at other counties and cities around the area. And what they're charging for their art, for their health insurance as well. And currently, we are using fifty dollars for employee only, one hundred for employee spouse, one seventy-five for employee and children, and one twenty-five for family. And that's, and we, the county's pitching in, we need to make some changes on the, on the employee side.
Employee, children should be one seventy-five?
Did you say one seventy-five?
It should have been seventy-five, it's been seventy-five, I, if I said one seventy-five, I misspoke.
Okay.
That's what it's been. Proposed rates, as you can see, one fifteen for employee, two twenty-five, two hundred and three thirty. And, but we also, number two point, recommend bringing our health insur- health savings account contributions back up to where they used to be. Employee puts in fifty, county kicks in fifty, employee puts in a hundred, county kicks in a hundred. And of course, employee can put in more than fifty or a hundred, but this is the baseline in order to get the county contribution. Where we came up with our proposed rates is if you look at our COBA rates. And that's where I, I invited Mr. Harris to a meeting, and it was a good suggestion we came up with. We, we need some sort of variable where we use the same calculation every year, not just fifty, hundred, whatever. You take our COBA rates, if a person leaves Scotts Bluff County and they're only covering themselves, it's gonna be one thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars a month on them. If an employee spouse, two thousand, two twenty-four, family is three thousand two hundred ninety-four. So what we are going for is ten percent of the COBA rate, is what the employee portion should be as a, as a good indicator. So that's what I'm proposing to you, or that we would recommend increasing our rates to one fifteen for singles, two twenty-five for employee spouse. Two hundred for employee and children, or three thirty for family. But increasing our county contribution to their health savings account, if the employee opens a health savings account, which most do.
What's the difference between family and, uh, spouse and children?
Family is a husband, wife, and their kids. Employee spouse is husband, wife only. Otherwise, an employee, children is just a husband and their children, not including a.
Spouse.
A spouse.
Single parent, one child.
Yes, thank you. And also, we have to increase the initial deductible from three thousand two hundred to three thousand three hundred this year. That's not our choice, that's set by the IRS for having a HSA plan along with a high deductible plan. So didn't recommend claim, changing any of the other deductibles. Questions for me, concerns? Or anything else I can clarify, cause yeah, the other thing I brought down here is, we have a fund in our mini funds. Called the Health, Health Fund Insurance, self, self-fund insurance account, twelve fifty-seven. And we know back in like twenty seventeen, just before I came, our health insurance was at a bad place, that fund, we were needing money to fund our health insurance plan. We've been very comfortable with where our plan has been, when we've been over a million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. But we finished the end of June at seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so we're slowly, we're eating away, we've gotta make some adjustments.
But we're back up, but we're back, we ended June at seven.
One million sixty-one.
So we've.
Okay, and there's some of that recovery, you hit the end of June, and regional care is going to, we're going to acknowledge where our high dollar claims people are. Okay, you know, you've had some big claims, know who they are, they're gonna go out there and call regional us, hey, get that bill done, get it sent to us so we can get it. Paid by the end of the year and send it to the stop-loss carrier, cause we. paid by the end of the year and send it to the stop-loss carrier, cause we, we should only pay the first sixty thousand. Last year was the first sixty thousand. If they don't get it paid by the end of June, the sixty thousand dollars starts over again July one. And we don't get that bill until later. So we did get hit with some big claims at the end of June, but then, once it hit the stop-loss carrier, then they gave us some credit back for some charges. So I might pay a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for Joe Blow's large hospital claim, but then stop-loss kicks in and gives us back fifty thousand of it, if I had my calculations right. However, this year, that number had to change because of our large claims experience to eighty thousand. I brought that to you in June. So.
So, so there's a couple of things here. One of, one of the reasons why we have such high claims is because our employees are captive. And they have to go to Regional West, or they have to go to quick care, or they have to go to a physical doctor's office. Our healthcare plan does not offer the ability for people to use telehealth. Now, I can go to Dr. Papenfuss and have a doctor's visit in, in-house for two hundred and sixty dollars once a year to get one of my prescriptions refilled. I can go online and I can get a telehealth visit for sixty bucks. The reason RCI does not allow us to have telehealth on our plan is because they want us captive. They want us going to Regional West.
No. Totally false. I called the other day and we are moving forward with, we just did not have the place code in place. We are moving that and changing it so we accept telehealth.
So why didn't we have it in the past?
It was not within our plan to accept a plan code or place code fourteen, if that's what telehealth is. We thought it was in place and it was not. And you brought it to my attention. I called and they said, you want us to move forward to making this amendment? We are making this amendment. However, your same visit to Dr. Papenfuss will still cost you six, two hundred and sixty dollars for a telehealth visit. You have another provider in Colorado, if they charge a hundred and eighty and you could telehealth it, you might be ahead.
Yeah.
But we are, that was number four. We are consid- considering amendment to co- to coverage allowing telehealth option, moving forward with this. Yes, we are doing this.
That's wonderful.
So.
RCI was the one who encouraged employees several years ago, trying to go to the ER to go to, to go to urgent care or to, uh, what's the other one? Quick care.
Yeah.
Rather than, rather than buy prescription drugs, if you can get something over the counter that will do the same thing. They, they, they encourage savings by our employees to keep our costs down.
And, and the other side of it, RCI, we went with the Cigna network to not be restricted to Regional West. So that was, that was something we did three, four years ago.
So.
I should've told you outright. I'm sorry.
So tell me again why we didn't have it in the past?
We, okay, when COBRA came, not COBRA, COVID happened a few years ago. I guess all the plans had be, to be amended to allow telehealth because you didn't want the in, in-person visits. And that's what my marketing person said, I thought it's still there. I don't think we ever changed that. It wasn't there. So anyway, we had to make a physical amendment to put it in there. I don't know if it was just lapsed or never officially put in our contract.
So oversight by RCI or oversight by us or?
Uh, I never knew to ask. When I asked several years ago for a telehealth option, of course, we are looking for, like, what we're gonna be discussing it next, the MIMED option. Let's call this agency, rather than you calling Dr. Papenfuss, you're gonna call this company, maybe download an app to call somebody in Arizona that's going to say, here's amoxicillin, you have assigned this infection. That option was gonna cost more per person, was our understanding at the time, cost our plan. But now telehealth is a thing. Since then, it's been COVID, I mean, since COVID.
Pri- prior to that, when it was in with COVID, and I see Mark sitting in the back, I think he was on the, on the, uh, insurance committee also.
Yeah.
Uh, but it wasn't being used and it was still costing us, and I think that was one of the things that we cut out in order to keep the, to keep the cost down on, on the whole plan. And that's been quite a while ago, but I don't recall all of it, what the conversation was.
But.
Mark?
A lot.
Sheriff?
A lot of things have happened since the last five years, and that is something I'm glad we're moving forward with. Although I do wanna point out, I'm told with the telehealth, doesn't mean just because you are visiting with Dr. Papenfuss and person, doesn't mean the business any less.
No, right. I understand that, but I can, I can shop around and I can find other doctors in the Cigna network that are gonna be much cheaper.
Absolutely. Yeah. So. Yeah, again, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you that personally, since you brought it forward, but I put my list in.
That's great news. That's great news.
Yeah. And I haven't gotten the documents yet. If you would have something, let me know, we can probably get it drafted in, but.
We should probably encourage employees to, to utilize telehealth. It's gonna save them money, it's gonna save us money, it's gonna save everybody all the way around.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
What about, uh, is the new radiology clinic in our network?
To my knowledge, it should be. I have not, anybody used it? Ever gone to the outpatient radiology, ever had a concern? You're raising your hand, Tyler, so I'm gonna look at you.
Uh, my wife's probably had like twenty scans in the last two months. I don't know if.
How's that? Okay. Okay. At Elite, the one at Elite Health we're talking, so no concerns.
That's something we should probably encourage, it's gonna, you know, I'm, I'm hearing it's like half the cost.
Oh, yeah.
I own an MRI appointment and if I would've went to Regional West, it was gonna be like twenty-eight hundred dollars. I paid cash, it was like.
I'll put the other one.
However, interesting story, cause I think this is what happened to you. She paid cash because we have a three thousand dollar deductible. If she would've wanted them to bill insurance, it was gonna be more, right? So it kinda, that was her rate outside of insurance.
Well, well, I know whether, I don't know whether it's Bridgeport or Kimball or somebody else offers MRIs. And they're in our network.
Hmm, yeah.
If I remember right.
But, I mean, what, from what.
For about half of what Regional West.
Yeah, but from what we just described.
Yeah.
You don't put it through your plan, you get a deal too. But if you are going to be a person needs to, that's already met their deductible, why would you do that? So. Questions? So that's number four. Number five, we've been offering the high deductible health plan and last year, we introduced a copay plan. We had maybe two people take advantage of it. One has since terminated, or maybe both have terminated. We are removing the copay plan, cause it was significantly more out-of-pocket monthly. I mean, their deductibles started at three hundred, it would, three hundred dollars a month for a single with, with different copays. At least that was where it started. We didn't even go back and re-look at what the rates would be with our new plan here, with our new thought process, so.
I think when people did the math, it wasn't worth it for them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You'd have to be a pretty high utilization user. So. Number six, Aflac has come, we, Aflac, we had Aflac plans in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And they offer cancer protection, accident plan, short-term disability, hospital confinement, critical, critical care policies. We had a good number of people that took advantage of this, but then Aflac came to us and, and they also offered that MIMED program that you could put on your phone for free. And then we could contact a provider wherever to, instead of even going to urgent care. If you, one of those deals where Sheriff and I to share the story of got a sinus infection, all I need is amoxicillin, just give me amoxicillin. I can tell, I can tell you why I have that. And they'll prescribe it at twenty-five dollars a visit kinda thing. So we will get, we would get MIMED back with this as well, at least for two years. But they went away because we had a person come in and say, in order to keep Aflac, in order to keep MIMED, we need to meet with every employee individually and offer them our services, even if they decline. And we weren't willing to do that. So they said, then we're leaving. Well, we got an, an, our first account rep came back. She's now working for Aflac in Wyoming and she goes, I'm not operating that way. I want to come and service Scotts Bluff County again. So she's willing to come and bring on Aflac. There's no contribution from the county side to these plans. It's all employees, if they are interested in the plan. We'll be setting up some meetings here in the next month, cause open enrollment has started.
And some of those are pre-tax stuff you can buy. Not all of it though, right?
I think most of it is. I'm not sure what isn't, and I'm sorry, I don't know that for fact.
We don't need to know that, that's for us.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, we don't need to know that.
Okay. So. Questions?
Good job. I would move that we accept the changes in the health insurance plan.
Is there a second? All second. So I have a motion and a second to approve the changes in the plan?
I don't think we've taken nearly enough thought in, or put enough thought into doubling the cost of healthcare for our employees. More than doubling.
You ready to show you the comparisons?
Yeah. She talked about the comparisons of other counties and other communities locally and even some private um companies locally. Is what we had in front of us when this decision was being made. And um city of Scotts Bluff was certainly part of it, city of Gearing, several counties.
Yes.
Um, a couple larger businesses, local businesses.
I don't think the rates are too bad compared to what I've seen out there.
Uh, that's what we were seeing on that comparison.
When would these go into effect? January one?
Um, December thirty-one payroll.
Any other discussion?
Think we have a second?
I think I do.
Yes, he said, Mark's second.
Thank you, I missed it.
Okay. Alright, so we have a, a motion and a second to approve the um new rates as presented. Um, let's go ahead and vote.
Yeah, four yeses and one no.
Okay.
Knappers, deny?
Okay, motion's carried. Um, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. The time clock plus and payroll processes update there.
Um, yes, I met with the person that's helping us integrate here about ten days ago. And we, we did some testing of the integration and we still have some work to do and we'll, and I have some more information to fill in in order to make the inform, the information flow. So it's on the way. It's working. It's, there's a lot to it right now. But I have started.
You think it'll be enforced before the first year?
I don't, I'm not gonna guarantee you, cause I, I met with, Kim and I met with the gentleman that's integrating and we still gotta get Charlotte in there, so we haven't even brought the piece to go to MIPS yet. We're just getting everything aligned in TCP to go forward.
But can they start, can they start functioning and even at that, they can make some of that stuff run, run proactive or something to where you can tie it in? You know, if it doesn't get done till March, we can still have all the records for the whole year.
Oh, we, and we do have all the records. It's just in paper form right now. It's all there. It's just a matter of trying to make it so it accepts it to move to the MIPS program.
Well, I thought we could get everybody used to, you know, the new concept of function and flock.
Well, they already are. We have, we have that. It's just trying to make this, the part seamless from the, um, from the managers to payroll person. But people are using the time clock and have been using the time clock for the most part. So we're that, we're doing that.
Sounds good.
So you'll keep us updated each meeting?
Sure, I can do that.
Alright, um, the next item it looks like is public comments. The Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented uh on this date. Any um comments from the public? Alright, seeing none, we'll continue. Uh, board and staff reports uh with discussion. We'll start with staff. Um. Anything from tourism? Okay.
I just have a couple of things to show you. First of all, I'm very excited to see the new Nebraska travel guide. Um, we, you know, we have talked to them a lot about not feeling like the western part of the state hasn't had a presence at all. Um, this is Pine Ridge on the cover. Um, this last year, we had Chimney Rock. And so we're kinda starting to make an impact a little bit on the big map. Here's Scotts Bluff National Monument in the back, so that's all good. Yeah, I know, pretty impressive. They actually know we exist. Um, here's just, here's another, just an ad, a page cover, Balloon Fest.
Well revealed.
Yeah. And there was one more. Um, here's a Western Nebraska ad. Just a kinda little bit about our trails and some different sports. Go west. So that's one thing I wanted to show you. And then the second part of this is that we are um part of the Nebraska Road Trip Scavenger Hunt, so I'm sure you've all heard about the Passport Program. Um, it's impossible for a lot of people across the state to complete that program. And I mean, it takes a lot of travel. There's a lot of places to go. And I think people still wanted to be involved, but just on a smaller level, maybe just go to a region. So we are part of that this year for the scavenger hunt. And so, um, they will come to my office actually to collect um a Northwest. I have no idea why the, they can't just say west. It makes me angry, but they won't do it. But we're Northwest, and so Chimney Rock sticker. And so they will come and collect this. And then if, once they're all collected, then they get the big Visit Nebraska sticker and then their name goes in for different prizes. It's lottery tickets, um, Visit Nebraska merch, so a lot of different things, but just another excuse to have somebody stop by and learn a little bit about us, so I was pretty excited about that. And then, I don't know, one other thing, this might also kinda be in Charlie's report, but we needed some more um pictures and video for the county website, not the tourism website. So I reached out to Kate, who shot the video um for Kurt's um transit. You might have to help me with all of this. The transit video that, yes. And he played it here, if you remember that, um, a, um.
Year ago?
So, and um, so I contacted her. We were able to get um in touch with the Nebraska Department of Roads and they released their rights for us to use that video. So I reached out to Kate, literal is her name. Um, she's part of White Shutter Media and she is actually going to make a forty-second video using the footage that he already paid for to make a video for the website. And I had no idea if we even had budget for this at all whatsoever. The county did, so tourism just, we, it's marketing. And I figure we'll be able to use it on our website as well. So for five hundred bucks, I just paid for it. So we have video for the, for the website, instead of the cornfields from eastern Nebraska. And it, it's all um B-roll footage from the monument and a little bit of Chimney Rock. So. All in a day's work. That's it.
Thank you.
Steve?
Uh, County Road Ambridge, well, he's been there still on.
You gotta set a good example for him.
Uh, the County Road Ambridge Northeast a minute, terrorists still on schedule to be done at the end of the month. And the Broadway Bridge was supposed to be closed this week, but it has been postponed till after Thanksgiving. I guess there was some scheduling issues with the traffic control company that would do the traffic control as far as barrels and barricades and that to get out here. So, and that's about it. And we're rigid inspecting this month, so got about a hundred of those to squeeze in this month yet.
Okay.
So, so far.
Over on this side. Over on this side, whoever wants to come up, if anyone needs to speak? Lisa, you have something?
Yes, um, just bringing you up to date that our person who handled general assistance and worked in the Health Department and did our roving as, as, as now resigned, as of the end of October. Kim and I have taken over general assistance and it's no fun. And actually, we had a meeting with Ken and Betsy V. Block and that other gal, Felicia? Felicia? Um, I can't remember right, I didn't look it up for you. Anyway, nevertheless, we're gonna start looking towards looking for an arrangement with Kaplan, it's where we need to be. I mean, we're, we have people, this is the craziest thing to me, that a person needs help with their rent, they go to Kaplan who says, you go to the county and then we call Kaplan and say, if you pay two hundred, I'll pay a hundred and fifty. They need to be at one place with the people that know how to deal with them. And they have like a staff of four or five people that handle them that come to the desk.
Wasn't that supposed to transition? What do we change all that?
Well, we've, we are in the process of finishing that up. I mean, yeah, it's-
So it'll, it will transition?
It will transition. I will work on a memorandum of understanding, I will ask for the help from Mr. Kelly and have him review it so I can prevent, present it at the next meeting. Kaplan is very excited, thinks this is a good move too, cause these people need, don't need to be bouncing around from agency to agency and they have a process. They, they, people come in and they say, this is what we need from you and we need it in two days. And if the person doesn't come back two, three days, you gotta, you gotta, yeah. And I'm not sure that was all happening before. So I think we're in a, it'll be in a better place and better managed. So, and we'll probably give them the remainder of our budget. So, anyway, we can talk about more of that next week, but I'll get it started. Alright?
Is that all, Lisa? From you?
That is all from me.
Okay. Was there anyone else over there?
I think they said no.
No? Okay. Um, we'll go to the board then. Russ?
Well, they don't have anything, we haven't done anything ground shaking this one.
Okay. Mike?
Well, I uh, attended the South Defense Class Club by Matt Myers and I was glad to see quite a few county employees there. Uh, I hope more people take advantage of that training. I attended the officials meeting, I attended the safety meeting, housing board. I also, this morning, uh, was with the original twenty-two advisory board at, at the Gearing City Hall. We are going, doing a road trip basically, going from community to community so they get to see our faces and we work with them and it's really productive.
I like that idea.
And then here about a week or so ago, to demonstrate the cooperation we have with other counties, they had the lost dementia patient in Kimble. And they finally called out uh, for assistance from a certain team in Scottsbluff County. And we deployed down there with our tracking team. Got there at midnight on a Thursday. Uh, and through some added interviews with the individual's son, our tracking team found that lady close to Interstate at two thirty in the morning, pitch black. Normally we don't search at night, but because of the age and the situation, we had to do that. So, we had uh, our two trackers and another individual out actually doing the tracking. Then they released her the next morning, so we got called back down to Kimble, so I had about two hours sleep. We had really good cooperation between Kimble County, Scottsbluff County, Sheriff's Office had a couple deputies down there the second day, State Patrol, so. Communications is working in those type of situations and that's really good to see.
Okay. Um, I'll mention my items, I just wanted, let's see, I have a Panhandle Public Health meeting this week on Thursday morning. Um, the uh, one of the other things I wanted to mention is there is the employee appreciation luncheon that's coming up, December fourth.
Yes.
And um, that's at eleven thirty in the morning until one o'clock, be sure that um, you get signed up for that. There's also a um, this week, a soup and chili luncheon Friday, November fifteenth, eleven to two. Uh, don't forget the NACO conference, December seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Um, and if you are planning on attending, you need to get signed up. Um, and then on, one of the things Mike and I were talking about earlier, most of you seen probably on the news today that the Department of Transportation um, declared that um, the um, four-lane highway from Minotair to Angora Hill is gonna use the north side of the, of the road, the way I understand it. There's a public hearing concerning that on November twenty-first, that's a Thursday um, at uh, six PM and that's in Minotair, I think at the high school?
North, cause yeah, mi- the elementary gymnasium.
Okay, elementary school. So, be aware of that.
It's at Lake Minotair School.
Lake Minotair?
That's what it said on the website, I believe, wasn't it?
I thought it was Minotair.
They're doing Minotair.
Minotair. Scott, you're saying?
Okay.
Yeah.
I better change my calendar then.
So, anyway, um, I know we have some constituents there, especially in Mike's district, of course, but um, it'd be uh, of interest probably to any and all of us, so. If you're interested in going, that's November twenty-first. Also wanted to mention, and Phil, you've been working on a resolution uh, uh, with the fire department in uh, the Kiowa Fire De- uh-
Kiowa Lyman, Village of Lyman.
Yeah, the vi- and the Village of Lyman, they're wanting to combine, you wanna fill us in on that?
So, they wanna combine and the, into the Kiowa District, so the Dabolto District. Real estate and the equipment that the village owns with both that district. I reviewed uh, the, the local agreement between the two of them. And a resolution to adopt it. Question to me was what, what would the county do? Would they need to move the building to their, to their map, that Kiowa District? I talked to one of the attorneys yesterday and suggested that the two attorneys will kind of get together and suppose how that's gonna work as far as the assessor's office is concerned. The assessor will have to change the line item for the property in the Village of Lyman to have a rural fire district assessment. Because the Lyman Fire District would be in the general fund, now they'll have to have a Kiowa Fire District line item in their property tax.
So the Commissioners, if I remember correctly, the Commissioners are the body that approves those district lines.
Yes.
And so, we'll need to do that and then there'll be some taxing issues along the way in the, I'm assuming, Treasurers Office, Assessor's.
Well, I, and I had asked him to, I had asked my court to talk to the assessor and to Heather, to see if-
And I, I suggested to them, we did that before, we realigned a number of properties in various districts, three or four years ago, five years ago.
Right.
And uh, it's the map was at that time. So, they're gonna have to agree on, up to the boundary line for their rural fire.
Phil, will the uh, Village of Lyman still have interest in any of that property?
According to their agreement, that will become a property of their own.
You know, morals set up, you know, I suppose most of them are set up that way. The city oversees the fire hall, but that way the county or the city buys the insurance and things. Otherwise, it's gonna change a lot, it's cause usually, you know, in the city, they have insurance already set up for, you know, all the properties they already own. And once you move out of the city and you start insuring any city, I doubt you'll get the rates that the cities get.
I don't know. Um, the two of them have decided this is the best way for, for to save money, I guess, and to organize their fire protection.
Okay.
And the only involvement the county has is to change the, change the map.
We helped the Zulu.
I, ISO is the one who makes that determination.
What's that, Ken?
ISO, yeah, the insurance, that's the, I don't understand, ISO.
Okay.
But they're the ones who make that determination as to what your insurance rate's going to be, as per your fire district.
And both of those organizations have attorneys representing themselves and then Phil's filling in the county portion. So, anyway, that's what we're doing.
I'm not involved in there, the local, we're on, the county should be involved in that.
No.
Make it, make that agree or don't agree on it. They won't represent.
So the gentleman from the fire district stopped by my office last week as well. Um, his claim was that the fire district does not get their money from the city and that's why they want to dissolve the agreement because they're covering the city. So, I told him it would probably be better. I think that they have to, am I correct, do they have to file deeds? Do they have to file any deeds with the deeds office on the um, fire district?
Sure, there'll be, their agreement calls for warranty deeds from the village to the fire district for the buildings in line. So they'll become owners of those buildings, the fire district will own the buildings where the fire department is.
And then, after the deeds get filed, then the mapping department will go through and redo the fa- the boundary, notify the assessor's office of those changes and then it'll change. And I told him that it was too late to change for the twenty twenty-four tax year. Um, that any changes that they make will be for the twenty twenty-five tax year.
Didn't that just happen in Tarrytown? Not very long ago. They have signs up like on Toluca Lane now saying, this is now covered by Scottsbluff Rural Fire District. Across the road on the other side is Gearing Fire Department.
Yeah.
I don't think it was a change, it's just that the Scottsbluff Rural Fire District decided they wanted to start signing the areas that they were responsible for.
So, but we won't, we won't have to do anything with it until we get the notifications and until they get their process. But they did say that they would be at one of the next meetings.
He had me put him on for December second.
Yeah, so that they can let you guys know of the changes that they're planning on making.
Appreciate it. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, I've got uh, four meetings coming up this week, I went to Kaplan.
So, does that change anything?
Went to, uh, actually went to uh, for several subcommittees from Kaplan and, you know, Region One, but uh, one thing with Kaplan is we did discuss the, the taking over. And everybody seemed to be very excited about it, they thought this place had it need to be. Wasn't any formal action taken and I don't think it needs to be, I think they, I think Betsy could do that one more. I'm assuming. Uh, sometimes Kaplan doesn't get the recognition that they need, but if you remember the Lakota camp off of East Overland. They stepped in and assisted with, with relocating a bunch of those folks down there with uh, food shelters. They have, they have two emergency shelters that they put some people in, transported some folks back to, back to South Dakota. Uh, and they, they, they worked really hard. They have several funds that they draw from, to help with that sort of thing and that's what they do is it. United Way gives them some, the Bellwether Salvation Army has money for. They have different funds that they could draw out of the date. So, and I don't know how it all came about, maybe the sheriff collaborated on it, but the police department was the one who, who kind of broke it up down there. And then took them out, but, but anyway, they're, they're all relocated in the same place as of Tuesday night.
Okay. Anything else? Charlie?
Uh, so we have a tourism meeting coming up tomorrow and I would, we did change the time of it, we're gonna start at two fifteen instead of one fifteen. And that's because we have a Zoom meeting scheduled at three PM uh, for a presentation that I would invite anybody to come to. It's gonna be a really neat presentation. Um, it's from a company called Tracer AI. And what they do is they track cellphone data. So, just to kinda draw uh, or illustrate this for you. Um, this is not a partisan comment, but it's just an example here. So, Kamala Harris rallies had, you know, ten thousand people at each rally and, and they were able to determine that the same people were going from Detroit to Flint to Minneapolis, so on and so on. And they were doing this based on cellphone data. And um, so, this, this company can come in here and they can, they can geofence like around the, let's say, the Five Rocks Amphitheater. And when ten thousand people go there for a Horizons Music Festival, they can determine where those people came from and where they're going when they leave. Um, you know, if we had a, drew a fence around the soccer fields, we could see on a Saturday where are those people going when they leave the soccer fields? Are they going to pick up a burrito from their favorite burrito shop or are they going to Walmart to spend some money? Um, you know, if the twenty-three clubs have a baseball tournament, they can determine, you know, how many people are, are they going straight to their hotel? Are they going out to eat? Are they doing something like that? So, this, this technology is really neat. Um, it'll provide a lot of value for our tourism partners. Um, and a lot of opportunities, you know. You know, i- if somebody said, hey, you know, gosh, they look at this data and they say, you know, forty percent of these people are driving through McDonald's on their way out of town, maybe I should sponsor the soccer tournament and I could, you know, capture twenty percent of those people, you know, or something like that. So it's gonna provide a lot of value. Um, the city of Sydney is using these folks right now um, to track, you know, where they're coming from, where they're going when they, when, after they leave Cabela's or after they, you know, pass through. Um, you know, what, where was theirs, you know, they came into town to get gas, well, where did they, where was their last gas stop? How do we, how do we, how do we get them to spend more time in Sydney? So, um, TCD was presented with, with, uh, this company presented to TCD a f- a few months ago. Um, and TCD didn't jump on it, but they thought it was a, a better fit for tourism. So, it's a, it's a pretty exciting deal and, you know, data is the best way to make decisions. And so, this, 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 we're really looking forward to this presentation. And I guess there's a few more. There's a, there's other companies that do this and we're gonna have a comp- another presentation by a similar company uh, the following month or soon, soon thereafter. Um, so we're excited about that. We do still have um, openings for a hotel person to join the Tourism Board. And then we'll have a few more openings uh, with the change of the, uh, as t- people turn out here at the end of the year, so. Um, we'll be talking about that again soon. Um, TCD meeting this month, I believe is the, um, their annual meeting.
November twenty-second.
November twenty-second, so. No TCD meet- I'm sorry?
Everybody's welcome.
Yes, yep, everybody's welcome, dude, so.
But we need our ass.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie?
Um, just to clarify, that NACO is actually the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. And they've really pared down the meeting on the twentieth. So there's not, the business meeting is actually gonna be on the
Thursday.
Uh, Thursday instead of the Friday, so it helps people get out of town faster on Friday morning. Um, and they've just, they've just kinda consolidated and made it easier for folks to travel back home. So, it would be great to have as many of us there as possible.
That's it. Okay. Anyone else? If not, um, that'll conclude that item, legislation, Charlie, anything?
No.
Okay. So, the next item is the executive session and I would offer a motion. Um, I would move pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the reissue of the revised statutes known as Nebraska Public Meetings Law, that the board hold a closed session with Dave Eubanks, Phil Kelly, Lisa Rhine, Heather Haaschild and the board for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation. I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest and that the executive session for pending litigation matters is clearly authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to go on the executive session. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
You have five yeses, so the motion's carried. We'll be going to the executive session at six twenty.
Larry Martin, Larry Martin, certified trackers.
Who is?
Larry Martin, we have two in the state.
Yeah. Okay. So, back in regular session. It's six forty-nine. Um, any discussion? No action?
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper? Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer? Uh, that's right, he was excused. I know.
So, any other action, discussion? Hearing done, meeting is adjourned.